Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 12th, 2024. I am the Board Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tinsborough Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Xfinity and Verizon FiOS and is a live stream on our website, www.tinsboroughma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience that intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tinsborough Fire Chief in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. At this time, I would invite all of those who can to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with Board introduction, starting from my left.
Good evening, Jaclyn Schnacker, it's Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Colin Loizel, Town Manager.
For those who are following along at home, based on the posted agenda, we will be moving the Town Manager's Report to below New Business 6A. With that, I will take a motion on the meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the regular session meeting minutes for review and approval for the July 29th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 300.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the executive session meeting minutes for review, approval, not release for July 29th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 300. Okay, citizen and business time. Did we have any? Seeing none. We'll jump right into the continued public hearing for right of first refusal on 84 Kendall Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the Board is well aware, just a brief background for those that are hearing about this for the first time, the property located at 84 Kendall Road, which was subject to a citizens petition at town meeting, was under Chapter 60 protection, which means that when they enter into a bona fide purchase and sale agreement or intend to convert the use of the parcel from open space to something else, it activates the town's right of first refusal. Under the right of first refusal law, the town has 120 days to either exercise its right of first refusal, therefore purchasing the property, or waive its right of first refusal. As a part of the original notice to the town, the developer made several concessions, including maintaining a certain amount of open space, installing walking trails, and contributing toward the treatment of Flint Pond. As we went through the process, our legal counsel advised that even though those concessions were made by the developer, unless they were in a development agreement, they weren't binding. And so, over the course of the last month, we've worked with abutters, interested parties, the Conservation Commission, and this board to come up with a development agreement that would hold the developer to all of the concessions that they've made in return for the Select Board waiving its right of first refusal. At the last meeting, we reviewed a very early draft of that development agreement, and there were two areas that the Board asked me to go back to the developer, specifically on the contribution to the Flint Pond treatment. Chaz Doughty, on behalf of the Flint Pond Association, appeared before the Board and suggested that the dollar amount they were offering, which at the time was $6,500, was not sufficient to cover the amount of additional treatment that would be required. And Chaz asked that, we asked the developer to increase that to $12,500. Also, we wanted to get some sort of plan from the developer about when those payments to the Flint Pond Association would begin. And so, I'm happy to report that the developer has agreed to increase the minimum contribution to the Flint Pond treatment to $12,500 as requested, and has added language in the development agreement, which is in bold in the draft that's in the Board's packet this evening, that says that they will begin making payments in the calendar year that they obtain all of their local permits. I did share this with Chaz beforehand. He wanted me to pass on to the Board that he approved the changes and was appreciative of the Board asking for them. The other question that came up was about the affordable units. In having a lengthy conversation with the attorney representing them, the intention of the project is to have a neutral impact on the town's SHI. And while I fully expect that during the planning Board's permitting process, the question about how many of the units will be affordable will come up, as far as this development agreement goes, they have agreed that at the very least, the project will not have a negative impact on the town's SHI. They will have to follow the same affordable housing requirements that any development will. Their concern about adding additional language, increasing the number of affordable units, was centered around, at this point in the development, they don't know how many of each unit will be assisted living versus continuing care, and that dynamic makes it hard to project. This development agreement mirrors the one that we had with Toll Brothers. It again includes all of the provisions that the Board originally requested, and the developer agreed to those additional ones. So, if there are no additional concerns from the Board, what I'd be looking for tonight is approval first of the development agreement, and then a separate vote afterwards, formally waiving your right of first refusal, which is now protected by the development agreement.
Okay, is there anybody here from the public who would like to weigh in? Come up to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Louis Crawford, 83 Frost Road. I wasn't here for this reason, but, for the audience, SHI. Acronyms drive me crazy.
The SHI refers to the inventory of affordable units. If we drop below 10%, then we are subject to what is often called unfriendly 40Bs. That's basically when a developer can come in and construct, with very limited regulations on the town's part, affordable developments. Tinsborough is fortunate, our SHI is above that threshold, and so as long as we continue to ensure that developments that come before the Boards, the Planning Board and the Select Board, have a minimum number of affordable units, what our bylaw requires, then we maintain that net neutral impact, and we never drop below the SHI.
Which is more than SHI, we're saying 10% for us.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, I knew that, I wanted the public to also hear that. The other part, being the greedy guy I am, the $12,500, would we need less community preservation funds? Would we need, every year, we give money, community preservation funds, to clean the pond. We need to spend less of the community preservation funds now that we're getting $12,500.
This, so right now, the CPC contributes to, not to their annual treatment, the town has a longstanding agreement with the Flint Pond that because of the pollution from Charles George, that the operating budget supports a limited amount of the annual treatment. It looks like twice now in the last five years, they have applied separately to CPC for the sonar, more comprehensive weed treatment. It is not my understanding that this would impact this, that $12,000, according to Chaz, was for the annual treatment, which is not currently being funded by CPC.
When I was sitting on the CPC, we did make contributions to cleaning up that pond, so that's why I'm bringing that up. Okay, so you're saying we're not gonna, it's not gonna help or hurt us?
Correct. My understanding from Chaz's presentation was they've, they have never treated the area that abuts this development in the way that they've treated the rest of the pond, because nobody was on that property, so there was no need for boat access. The way the presentation that Chaz made was this $12,500 will allow them to now treat that portion of the pond, so that they don't have the same issues that they no longer have in other places that they have treated.
Okay, I won't go on and on, but when you drained that pond to put in the new dam, there was significant cleanup of weeds done at that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 300. Okay. Thoughts from the Board on this item?
All I'll say is that we've gone through this multiple times. You know, Colin resolved the last remaining issues that we had. And I think $12,000 goes a long way to improving Flint Pond, and I think that's why Chaz was so happy with that. And I'm ready to move on.
Yeah, no, I agree with Mr. Cohane. I would have liked to seen the $12,500 be more, and I know when Chaz was here before, he had even thrown out the concept of perhaps having the people that own some of those units become part of the Flint Pond Association, because they're contributing, what, I believe, $300 per family? So, you know, it would be nice to have the residents in this area, you know, if the new residents coming in, to pay a piece of their share. I would love to see that. It hasn't happened. At the very least, we got more money from the developer, which I think is a good thing. You know, my understanding from Chaz's presentation, it's expensive to keep treating that pond. It's an ongoing process. Just goes a long way towards it, but it doesn't, it certainly doesn't create a windfall for us. We're just keeping our heads above water. But I'm happy with the way, the changes we've made to the agreement.
Yeah, and Colin, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding when we did that is the new residents, we don't cover them in this agreement.
Right.
There's nothing precluding them from joining, and my understanding from Chaz was that they'd be willing to allow that and would welcome such a thing. So, once, you know, those folks, once that is figured out, I'm hopeful that that will happen, because they're gonna be contributing, so they might as well become members so that they help, you know, with a say, and it should be a beautiful portion for them in that space. So, you know, as far as the agreement, I'm happy that we get those items addressed, we got clarification on the items. I am confident that the permitting process, that the folks that are, be involved in that will make sure that all the appropriate interests are addressed. So I think that we've done what we can do in this, given, you know, the situation that we've talked about now. This is what, the fourth? Is this the fourth meeting? So, I, it sounds like we're in agreement, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board approve the development agreement as presented and authorize the Town Manager to sign on the Board's behalf.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 300.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board waive its right of first refusal for 84 Kendall Road per the aforementioned.
Aforementioned.
Development agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 300. Okay, let's go to new business. Let's do Item 6A, Request for Name Change, Council on Aging to the Center for Active Living. I assume we're gonna have a presentation.
Yes.
You're gonna drive, and come on up. If we need another chair, we can have another chair, we got three microphones, so, however many folks you'd like to have.
It's gonna be just the two of us?
Welcome. If you can, if you can.
I'm gonna get the mics a little bit closer.
Yeah, get the mics a little bit closer. Yes, feel free, we're not allowed to move them, but you are.
Oh, we can, thank you.
Yes. If you can give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Rose Mitchell, 40 Charred Road, and I am the current Chair of the Tinsborough Council on Aging.
My name is Joanne Calabocas, my address is 29 Virginia Road, Tinsborough, and I am the current Vice Chair of the Council on Aging.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I may introduce the other Board members that are here.
Please, sure. Yes.
Well, you all, of course, know Barbara, from her road, she's the Director, of course. Beverly Dean is our Secretary for the Council on Aging, she's been on the Board for a number of years. Behind her in the yellow is Margaret Repenhegan, and Pam Russell is also back there, they've come to support us in this presentation. So, thank you, if I may.
Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the Council on Aging has been discussing for a number of months, looking at the name "The Senior Center," and the kind of perception that the Senior Center is for some of the citizens in town. We feel that, and we've heard from citizens, that they feel that they're not old enough or not elderly, and just that the Senior Center is for playing bingo and canasta and not much more. So, we feel that that perception is very inaccurate, and we have been talking about how can we change that perception, which in the hopes will get more seniors involved to our center. So, a name change, we feel, is the first step. But first, let me talk a little bit about the Senior Center and the services that it does provide for our seniors. We feel that it provides some physical engagement in the mornings, every morning, there's different exercise classes, there's zumba, line dancing, there's gonna be hula hoop yoga, bone builders, there's opportunities for our seniors to exercise and get that physical engagement that is so important. The social engagement is quite abundant there, from, there's a traveling chef program, there is poker, this blackjack poker or something like that, that is very robust, the people that go there have a wonderful time, along with bingo, community meals that are there, and it really fosters that social engagement that is so critical to citizens in the 60 and above area. As well as the cognitive expansion, there's opportunities to learn new skills, there's mahjong there, which is great for the brain, we've been learning bridge there, there's painting classes, book clubs, nutrition classes, there's so many opportunities there for that cognitive expansion. All those areas which are so important to our seniors, age 60 and above, which is there. So we feel the name Senior Center doesn't accurately reflect what is offered currently. So that's why, after months of discussion, in June, the Board voted to bring forward a proposal to change the name to, excuse me, the Center for Active Living. This is not groundbreaking, 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 thank you, in Massachusetts.
Say that five times fast.
Not groundbreaking to change the name of a Senior Center to the Center for Active Living. In 2008, the town of Sharon changed their Senior Center to the Center for Active Living. Other communities that followed include Hingham, Plymouth, Newton, and Sandwich, those are all currently either Thrive for 55 or the Center for Active Living. So we're not, this is not new or groundbreaking, I can't say that word, but it is something that we as a Board feel will hopefully draw more seniors in and help them experience what is happening there at the Senior Center. Did I forget anything? Anything you want to add, Joanne?
No, yes. When I spoke to people about the Senior Center, as Rose pointed out, we're not ready for that. That's not us. We're not seniors. So we decided that maybe what we could do is offer some programs in the evening as well. Could be anything from trivia, bingo, paint night, whatever. We know it's baby steps, we know it'll be one program a month, or as we go along, a little bit more often. But if we start drawing them in now, I'm a senior, but I'm not a senior. I am a young senior, and that's what we need to get to the Senior Center. And when I become a senior, I'm still gonna go to the Senior Center, but I'm not gonna say, no, I don't want to, because I know what the programs are and what they have to offer. So that's our goal, I think.
Correct.
But it has to start with the name change. Yep, exactly.
Excellent. Well, I guess I'll open it up to the Board. Anybody wanna start?
I'm a senior, but I don't know. I confess, I have not been there, but now I'm intrigued, so this is good.
Yep.
I think, I agree that changing the name to Center for Active Living opens up whole new, you know, bunch of possibilities for you, and maybe a lot of other people in town will say, hmm, I'm intrigued. And I think to your point, getting someone in the door for the first time is the first step, that's the hurdle. Once you get them in, then hopefully they're hooked, and they become, you know, regular clients, and, you know, good things will happen. So I think this is, I think this is a great idea. It just sounds like you guys are planning so many good things. I think doing something at night is a great idea, right? Because there are a lot of folks that are still working, even if they're seniors. And so, offering more evening, and maybe even some weekend things, would be able to draw in another group of people that, you know, otherwise wouldn't be able, avail themselves. So I think it's terrific. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Cohane?
Well, welcome, Joanne and Rose.
Thank you.
Don't see you very often at the Select Board meeting. Glad to have you. Thank you very much for volunteering, you know, for this committee and what you do for the town overall. You know, I remember when I first walked into the Senior Center, I was running for a Select Board, and I got questions, I got like three questions, and they were all the exact same, are you old enough to be here? And I was 58 at the time, I think, but, you know, I guess I'm old enough, you know? So there is a stigma to that. I like the idea of the name change, and it sounds like you've discussed this for quite a while, which is good. Once we do change the name, how are you, how are you gonna try to get more and different people involved? Is there different programs that you're hoping to do? You know, I know you talked about at night, but one of the things I noticed of the Senior Center is the vast majority of the programs are in the morning. Looking to put more afternoon programming?
Correct, that's a great question, Mr. Cohane. I think that's.
Please don't call me Mr. Cohane.
Selectman Cohane. Better.
Senator. Senator.
I think it's a step. The first step is presenting this to you and the Town Manager as well, bringing that back to the Board, and then developing ideas through subcommittees as to how can we live up to the name "The Center for Active Living." What are the different ways we can bring different segments of the community in? I know different community, different Senior Centers offer very robust pickleball programs, which is on my list, and I think it's brainstorming as a committee. How can we do more afternoon activities? How can we tap different areas of the, of our community? And the evening, as Joanne mentioned, one evening a month to bring some of our 60 and over people that are still working, with the Senior Center currently closing at 4:00, we can't, we can't offer any services to that, that population. So, it's, pickleball is on the top of my list. But absolutely looking at the afternoon and one evening a month, having subcommittees to try to brainstorm, bring activities that would tap different areas of interest from our community. Great question.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, I think this is a great idea. I'm a little sad that I'm not at the 60-plus yet, I got a few more. I'm darn close. But I think it's great, I think the programs that are there, I don't know that, you know, we run into this with the library, where people don't necessarily know all the things that are available. So I think this would be a good jumping point for us to, you know, kinda have a rebrand and let people know what's available, expand some of the things that are available there. I think that we have great facilities, I think we have great people. I appreciate all the time that you guys spend in coming up with the programs and working through those. I hope, you know, if you look at the demographics of the town, the town is getting older, we're all getting older, and I think that the needs here are only going to increase over time, you know, notwithstanding what we just did at the right of first refusal. There's not a lot of places, so people are staying here in town, and so if we have opportunities where we can bring the community together and, you know, give them some of those activities, I think it's fantastic. I think the rebranding and renaming it, I think, is a great idea, a good starting point. I think what we just need to figure out is, okay, how do we help, once that's done, right? This is, this is one step. I think it might be a matter of having you come in periodically and talk about some of the programs, so that we can connect with more people and figure out how we leverage our fantastic media department to do more and get the word out there that there are these options. Because I think a lot of people, they just don't know. They sit there and they say, oh, you know, I'm kinda bored, there's nothing to do, it's a sleepy bedroom community. Well, you know, there's poker, there's, you know, there's trivia night, there's pickleball, I know, you know, there's all these things that we have, and help not only keep folks, you know, entertained, but active, right? We need to be active during a lot of this. So I think it's a fantastic idea, totally on board with it. I think we just have to figure out how we help.
Can I just make one last comment?
Please.
And I appreciate what you do in Neighbor to Neighbor, there's a big list of all the activities that you do there, so I think that's a, that's a great first step. I'm wondering if there's, if there's any way you could solicit feedback from the townspeople as to what activities they might wanna see there? You know, it's one thing to speak to your Board, right? And that's kind of a closed group, but if you could expand that somehow, and I don't know how, but if there's a way to expand that and get feedback from other people, I think that would, you know, you might hear, the idea's like, wow, we never would have thought of that.
Can I say something?
Please.
Several years ago, we did.
You might have to go to the microphone.
Oh gee.
We knew it was gonna happen, Barbara.
Yeah, I kinda knew it, but that's all right. Several years ago, when I was going for my certification, prior of it was an evaluation process. You had to evaluate certain programs to see if they were effective, active, if people were enjoying them, or, so I went through that whole thing, and I still have all that stuff now going through the accreditation, like I told you last time I was here, is to redo some of the evaluations that we had done before. So we can do, we did a mailing last year to all the households in town, and once we're gonna do the name change, we can do that with the big mailing, get it out there, and ask, you know, put a little survey maybe, like what are you interested in besides what we have?
Yeah.
Because we're open to suggestions all the time. I mean, there's drumming classes now. So, believe it or not, they use, they use most pads.
I was gonna say, it's better to do it there than at home, right? Less noisy at home.
So as people, you know, have more interests and more things, and more people come in, we get people, we probably had 20 new people last week come into the Center.
Fantastic.
And signing up. It's crazy.
And how did they hear about it? Or was it just a group together?
There's word of mouth around town that, pretty good, that has moved to other communities too. I have a good friend, her sister lives in Chelmsford, and she said, I've heard great things about the Tinsborough Senior Center, and people in, you know, so from other communities, some people, they say we're friendly, we're nice, we offer a lot of programs, and we're just gonna continue, and we just try to do whatever we can for the community.
Go ahead.
I'm Margaret Repenhegan, 57 Beverley Road. Just to add on to what Barbara's been saying, and Rose, and Joanne, once we are able to come up with a more comprehensive plan on the marketing, branding, et cetera, I think the first time we say we have an event, let's say it's a pickleball at the Tinsborough Sports Center, that's the draw. Now there's an association with the Council for Active, the Center for Active Living and the Sports Center. And so now you have groups of people who may be watching and going, oh, who's that taking up those courts or whatever? Oh, that's, you know, you have to be, you have to be 60 to get in that club. And it's just to create an interest, if it's a monthly evening program, oh, did you go to the one last month? That was really interesting. Or we had a lot of fun, I met someone I'd never seen before. And building on that trend for the elite group that's now almost 60 and 60 and above, but not to the exclusion of the current seniors that participate in the activities, and opening up opportu, we'll think of other things for them to do if they can't play pickleball, if you know, if that makes sense. So I think it's a win-win for all members of the Center.
Fantastic. I mean, I guess I'll entertain a motion, because I think it's pretty obvious where we stand.
I would agree with that. Mr. Chair, I move that we change the name from Council on Aging to the Center for Active Living.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I would just note that we're only, we're only changing that in terms of the physical building.
Physical building.
The board, the Council on Aging. You didn't do anything wrong. I just want to make sure people at home know. The Council on Aging as the governing body for the COA will remain the Council on Aging, but we will now refer to the center, which is called the Senior Center of the Council on Aging as the Center for Active Living.
Do you want to change that motion?
No, no, it's fine the way it is. I just wanted to clarify, yes.
The Tingsboro Senior Center to the Center for Active Living.
Thank you.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries three zero zero. Thank you for coming in.
Very much, everybody.
And, and please, let us know how we can help. Let's, you know, I know you've got the newsletters, you've got some different things, but if you would like to present to us, here's, you know, some of the things.
Logo, don't worry.
Yep.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks very much.
Okay, now let's take a step back to item five, the Town Manager's Report.
Always a step back. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am thrilled to share that we've enrolled ten residents into the Civic Leadership Academy, which will start next Wednesday and run through the October Special Town Meeting. All of the residents that we've admitted are folks that have never served on a board or committee before and have expressed a desire to learn more and get involved. We're using this initial cohort to develop feedback for how to improve the program moving forward. We've, all of our department heads really took this in stride and they've been working really hard to put together, not just meaningful, but also engaging presentations. So I think, I think the, the folks that have signed up are in for a, a great time. I'd like to thank Senator Kennedy, who was able to secure a seventy-five thousand dollar earmark through the recently signed fiscal year twenty-five state budget for the construction of our new DPW building. This will be on top of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was approved by town meeting in the fiscal year twenty-four capital budget and on top of the funding that the sewer commission will contribute, which is based on the intermunicipal agreement signed with them last fall. Additionally, a big thanks to State Representative Colin Gary, who was able to secure fifty thousand dollars in a local action earmark for safety equipment for the Tingsboro Fire Department. So we made out much better than many other communities did in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. And now we just hope that the administration doesn't cut them like they did last year's. Last week, Chief Russell coordinated an advanced emergency planning and preparedness meeting ahead of the August twenty-fourth party by the bridge. We had a very productive conversation with key leaders and event organizers to ensure that we're prepared should a natural disaster, severe weather event, or other man-made crisis take place during the event. As a reminder, the event begins at eleven AM on Saturday, August twenty-fourth in the town center and ends at dark with fireworks over the Merrimack River. Motorists are advised that there will be road closures along Kendall and Winslow and a lane closure along Middlesex Road. Additionally, the Tingsboro Bridge will be shut down, not just to vehicular traffic, but also to pedestrian traffic during the fireworks. So if you're planning on crossing the bridge, I would do it before eight o'clock to avoid the, the traffic. On that note, the Affordable Housing Trust will have a table at the block party on August twenty-fourth to solicit feedback from residents on what they want to see included in our updated housing production plan. There are also several other town-sponsored tables, including one I'm very excited about. Our town clerk, Jessica Brunel, is hosting a voter registration table that happens to be the last day to register to vote. So the clerk will have a table. The police department has one. Their school resource officer program has one. The Board of Health has one and many other departments will be there as well. The Tingsboro Board of Health is hosting a free blood pressure clinic at Town Hall on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, from nine to eleven AM. They are also currently distributing Narcan rescue kits at no charge. You can see some of the disposal stations set up throughout Town Hall. They're also available with additional information at the Board of Health. These are being funded as a part of funds that we received through the National Opioid Settlement. The money is still coming in every day. I feel like there's a new settlement and there's a working group within Public Safety, the Board of Health and our office that's working on ways to use that within the guidelines. It is restricted for certain purposes, but this is obviously one of those uses. I'm happy to share that we are moving on now to the construction phase, the construction document phase, I'm sorry, of our new DPW building. The plans received approval from the Sewer Commission at their meeting on Thursday. And our Superintendent of Public Works, Jake Swicker, has spent the last few weeks working with DPW staff to ensure that the plan as presented is sufficient for not just our needs today, but for the future needs of the DPW. With our current schedule, we'll, we plan to release bids by the third week of September. And if all goes according to plan, we'd see construction start in October. As a reminder, at this phase, we're working on the shell of the pre-engineered steel building and we look to complete the inside at a later date. Originally, that was our plan because funding was tight, but we had a last-minute infusion of what was expiring earmarks that covered the full seventy-five thousand dollar design. So that released some of that burden with the new seventy-five thousand dollar earmark. We are actually in a much better place and we may be able to do some of the interior outfitting sooner than later. The Attorney General's Office has notified the town that all of the zoning amendments from the May twenty-twenty-four annual town meeting have been approved with the exception of Article twenty-one, which was an article that reaffirmed the town's prohibition of solid waste uses in the industrial district. They didn't disapprove of it yet. They've asked for an extension and we agreed. So they'll be issuing their determination on that article by September twenty-sixth. The approval did include the two articles that were relative to the MBTA Communities Act, so that's a big win there. We are now just waiting on our file, final compliance determination from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And then finally, I just want to share that we are in the planning stages of a public farewell and appreciation celebration for Police Chief Richard Howe to celebrate his twenty-nine years of service to the town of Tingsboro. The event will take place at the Old Town Hall from four PM to six PM on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. We'll have a formal announcement later this week, so stay tuned for more information.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the board for questions or comments.
Mr. Chair, for the DPW building, of course, very excited that this is, is moving forward here. Just so the residents know, the developer, the one that's going to build a warehouse or warehouse-type project in the back of the DPW, you know, they are going to run sewer and water to the old building and the new building. And I didn't see this in here, Colin, but they also are going to pitch in some money for the DPW building.
Correct. As a part of that agreement, they are providing up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the pad that the building will sit on. They're also bringing utilities to the site.
Yeah, okay. So I'm just very excited to see that finally seem like it's a, we have, we kind of have some dates of what, what it looks like to, to do this. That was a-
Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Chair, I am equally thrilled that you enrolled ten people in that Civic Leadership Academy. I think that, that can be sort of the, the, sort of the farm system for people that eventually might want to join committees or offices in the town. And I, I certainly hope that we continue to do this on, on an annual or, you know, biannual basis. But I just, I really think this is going to be a, a great tool for the town and, and people are going to benefit from this tremendously. So thank you.
Yeah, and just to echo, you know, thank you. We have, we have Rony and Colin here, so, you know, it's great that you guys have come up with the program. I think anything that we can do to help with the success of that, it's great that you have ten people signed up. If you need anything from us, I'm sure you won't be shy. But I, I, I agree. I think it's a, it's a great thing. I would love to see if this could expand and, and help jumpstart maybe some things in the schools. Because I think we have some opportunities there to, you know. This town has a lot of people who still live here, who grew up here, and I, I don't think that's going to change. I think, you know, a lot of these folks are here, so it would be great if they learned in school how, how things work and how they can be involved. You know, as I always say, a huge amount of your tax money is spent here locally. And you actually have a lot more influence on how that money is spent locally than you do at, at a national level where you really don't have a lot of say. So I think it's fantastic. Good program. I, I do think that a lot of stuff going on. And, you know, I, I encourage people to not just look at this week's updates, but they can also find prior week, or prior meeting updates. They can do it as podcasts, as a variety of things. I, there's a lot of people that come up to me and say, hey, what's happening with this? Or what is going on there? And it's like, it was right there in Colin's update. So I encourage people to perhaps look at those as well. Those are some things, a wealth of information that's there. So thank you again for a, a good report. Look forward to seeing the podcast and on various media outlets.
Wherever you get your podcasts.
Excellent. All right. Switching back now. New business, six B. Review approve host community agreement with Dreamfields, Massachusetts, one DBA Jeter at eighteen Progress Ave.
Ladies and Mr. Chair, before the board this evening is a new host community agreement for Dreamfields, Massachusetts, which operates a marijuana product manufacturing establishment at eighteen Progress Ave. The original HCA with Dreamfields was entered into before the Cannabis Control Commission promulgated new regulations based on the cannabis reform law that was adopted in twenty-twenty-two. While there were no applicable substantive changes required under the new law, the Cannabis Control Commission, in true state fashion, rejected Dreamfields' renewal application because the form of the HCA did not match the one that they wanted to see. So as with the HCA that you recently adopted for the same reason with Yushi, Town Council has worked with the council representing Dreamfields to utilize the new model in creation of a new HCA for this business, matching the terms of the previous agreement. The result is attached. You will know that there are no substantial changes other than the term of the agreement. As you'll remember, the most impactful change that came from the law adopted in twenty-twenty-two governed how you collect impact fees. And we had not assessed impact fees on this establishment because the license was granted after the law was changed, but before the formal regulations were promulgated.
How long is the term?
The term of this will expire on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Comments?
No questions. Thanks for dealing with the state, Colin. I know it's, it's, it's rough sometimes. You know, first of all, they, they, they go back on their word and, you know, they won't allow us to collect host impact fees. And now they change everything else to, to make it harder. But, you know, I looked this over and it does meet, you know, exactly what the new regulations are, so I'm good with moving forward.
I have no questions. The agreement looks fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if you follow the news, the Cannabis Control Commission has some issues. We're not the only ones who are dealing with this. I applaud you for helping to navigate through some of the craziness that's there because I hear that other towns aren't so fortunate. So, I mean, this, this is what we need to do to support the businesses that are trying to work in, in Tingsboro. So I have no, no concerns on this. So entertain, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the SLU board approve the host community agreement with Dreamfields, Massachusetts, one Inc., DBA Jeter at eighteen Progress Ave, as presented and authorized the town manager to sign on the board's behalf.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries three zero zero. Review approve Police Chief profile for posting.
Excellent. Including your packet this evening as a draft of the profile that we'll publish as we begin the search for a new chief of police. The profile was put together by Paro Associates with input from my office and our Director of People and Culture. It includes a lot of the standard language that you'll find in any other profile that's posted for a chief position. But we've added an emphasis on budgeting, regional familiarity, and awareness of the new regulations promulgated by the Creation of a Police Officer Standards and Training Commission. We're looking for any feedback from the board this evening and then ultimate approval on the posting. Our intention is to hopefully post this tomorrow. The schedule would look like this posting being available on the Mass Municipal website, our website, Paro's website, and the Mass Chiefs page. They would also do some direct outreach and we would leave it live for one month with the window for submissions of resumes and cover letters being September thirteenth. I would expect that during the week of the sixteenth, we'd work with Paro to review the submissions and select candidates for the structured interviews. The resume review would be conducted by Paro, the town manager, the Director of People and Culture, and the Chief of Police. We then looked to schedule interviews for the week of the thirtieth, perhaps into the first week of October, depending on how many interviews we're conducting. Those interviews would be conducted by a panel that would consist of chiefs that Paro Associates puts together. And we would observe, there would be a town panel that observes it. That would include the town manager, the Director of People and Culture, and up to two members of the select board. One of the things that I would ask the board to discuss tonight is whether or not you would like to include the chief police in the panel. One of the, one of the considerations is that, you know, it would be beneficial, some towns find, to have the outgoing police chief weigh in. One of the areas that Paro advised us to be cognizant of is if you do end up with an internal candidate, they often advise against including the incumbent police chief because it could stifle the opportunity for an, for an internal candidate to talk about perhaps ways that he or she would do things differently. I don't think we, I don't know that we'd have to worry about in this case, but that's certainly a consideration. The posting is relatively long. You'll notice that it includes just a lot of background information on Tingsboro, which is standard. These are certainly not the only things that we would look for, the ideal candidate. But this is what we'll use to kind of help figure out who gets the interviews. And then certainly the interview panel will have more of a discretionary review of, of the folks and their performance. But this sends a message to people who may apply, that they should apply if they meet these, these different qualities. And if they don't, perhaps this isn't the role for them. So the first thing would be the approval of the posting. And then in your second motion, I would look for the board to assign members of the select board to the interview panel. I don't necessarily need a, a vote of the board, but I'd also welcome feedback on whether or not to include the chief in the interview panel.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So we're not going to do the interviews for quite a while. So I was thinking as relates to the, you know, to the second part of what you're asking for, you know, who on the board should be, you know, on this and the police chief. Can we maybe put that off to the next meeting since we'll have two more members here? And I don't think it sets us back at all.
Absolutely.
You know, and as for the first part of this about the profile, you know, you know, we, we hired, we hired this firm because of their expertise and they've done this multiple, multiple times. So I think everything in there looks good. And, you know, hopefully we accept their recommendations on, you know, how, how they move this forward in the most expeditious and, you know, thorough, thorough way. That's all I got.
Yeah, a couple of things, and it sounds like Mr. Schneider agrees as far as deferring as to who will participate. I was going to say the same thing. I am concerned, you know, just in timing and whether we really need it. One thing that would be helpful though for our next discussion on that is if we could better understand exactly what the role is of that, that committee on our side. Because my understanding is that we'll be listening.
Correct.
And we won't be asking questions.
Correct.
So just to, to be clear as to what the participation will entail. The other is relative to the chief participating. Like to understand a little bit more about, okay, what's the downside to it? I think one of the things that I was thinking is that here we have somebody who's got a considerable amount of experience, particularly in this town, and understanding what's there. It would help if I was on the, and I'm not saying I am, but if I was on that group that was listening in, it would help to have some perspective to understand implications of what, you know, somebody might say, a candidate might say as far as what their vision is and how they might do something. Just because I don't have that lens of a police chief, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the implications. I know what the implications are from a community standpoint. But part of the reasons, you know, we have, we did the Town Manager Act and a variety of these things is that we had professionals who know their, they know their, their role in their profession oftentimes better than we do. And I think if we don't tap into that, we might be missing out. So I'm sure Paro has some thoughts. They may have some things that I haven't thought of. So I'd like to just understand that a little bit better before we make that, that type of decision. I assume that's not a problem. I'm assuming they could give us that.
High level, really, the only potential downside is that if you worry about an internal candidate stifling how, you know, presenting feedback on how they may run the department, that's the only downside. Certainly the point you made is the, is the glaring positive, having that insight. You know, the, the panel will be police chiefs and-
Right.
Paro's team leading it as a retired police chief. But it is different, certainly, having the police chief who is familiar with the intricacies of your particular department. But certainly the only potential downside, and it's not always a downside, it's just a consideration, is that you, if you had an internal candidate, they may not be as open about how they may-
That they would change.
Uh, Mr. Chair, would also be a, a downside that, you know, you know, outside candidates might look at this and go, they already have a six, a deputy- look at this and go, they already have a six, a deputy that's been there for six years, now the police chief is on the board, why would I even put my name in? Would that, you know, if you could just ask Parrow, you know?
Yeah, how they address that.
Sure.
Yeah, and then the other thing I would like to understand, okay, so the interviews happen, right? Get it down and, and, you know, I think we had said that, you know, we're not going to have like, there's not fifteen interviews here, they're going to whittle it down to a small group. I certainly would think that they would, you know, know who the other candidates are, but I'd like to know, are they making a recommendation? Are ultimately, I mean, it's your decision, the way I look at it, we're going to weigh in because ultimately we have, you know, we have to approve the contract or, or disapprove within a couple of weeks, which, the only thing I will say is, I personally think it would be better to have two select board members on the panel, just because, you know, you're less likely to have some questions or concerns about who was selected if there's multiple people that were there participating, so personally, I think that we should have two of us. I would like to understand, okay, who makes the decision and, and what's the role? If, if we're just sitting there listening, are we, are we making a recommendation to you, and then they're making a recommendation to you and, and so?
Sure. Parrow will, it could be either way. My inclination is to say that the town's review panel is the one making a recommendation based on what they hear during the panel. Parrow and their interview panel will be there to answer questions you may have, like, does that line up with your experience? There's a lot of new things within, within policing, particularly around posts, they'll be able to help. Given the role that a police chief plays, I think it's much more, I think the opinion of the local panel, if you will, will be much more beneficial, and so I was not expecting to ask Parrow to also simultaneously say, here's our recommendation for who you should hire. They will serve as the sort of fact finders and, you know, make sure that the information we're getting from the candidates is translatable to those on the panel, and also if there are any glaring red flags that come out that us non-police folks don't pick up on, that's kind of the role they would play.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. Yeah, and really, ultimately, it's, it's your call, so it's, you know, what did you want to, that's kind of what I was trying to get, is what did you want to see the process be, given you've had the discussions with Parrow, you kind of know where we're going on some of these, and understand what you need relative to that? Okay. So I guess we, what we do need to do today is authorize the, oh, did you get to speak?
No, I did not.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm glad that you gave me the finger and said
Well, I was going to get, no.
It was the right one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Where do I start? I, I agree with what we've said as far as waiting to appoint who we're going to appoint, because otherwise I'd be voting for select people Moran and Gilfis myself, so let's wait till they're here. But no, more, more seriously, I, I am sort of on the fence about whether Chief Howe should be part of the panel, and it, and I think it's, you know, Mr. Cohen hit it right on the head. I, I don't want to give the impression to a, a sort of an outside candidate that, that the inside candidate might have a track because he's more familiar with Chief Howe, you know? Also, as you point out, Colin, you know, if you have, if you have an inside candidate, not only would they want, you know, maybe be hesitant about talking about what they change, but they'd also be hesitant about talking about, well, these are the things I saw that, that really weren't that good in our department, you know? So we'll have other chiefs, there's going to be this breadth of experience on that panel to begin with. I'm not sure adding Chief Howe, and, and he's got terrific experience, but I'm not sure if, if that would add to the, the interview experience for all the candidates. Just my, just my opinion, so that's just, just the way I'm looking at it. Otherwise, I think this profile is great, and I think that the process is, is very well thought out, so I think it'll work well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess we'll
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I move the select board approve the profile for the chief of police.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is, Colin, is that what you needed?
That's perfect.
All right. Any further discussion?
He wrote the recommendation.
Oh, good.
It's better be. Really embarrassing it wasn't.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries three zero zero. And then let's figure out where we are for, we'll put it on the next meeting, although I think we, we'll have to see who is or isn't here, but either way, we'll, let's, let's cover it the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Six D. Review approve cable agreement with Comcast.
Mr. Chair, Rony Camille, our media program director, has worked on this with Cable Council on behalf of the town, and so I'll let Rony give a high-level summary, as you saw in your packet. It's a very lengthy agreement, but I think Tingsborough made out very well in it, and Rony is prepared to talk more about it.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you, Board, Mr. Chair, for you. For the record, Rony Camille, Media Program Director. Before the board this evening is the cable television renewal license for the town of Tingsborough. It is a ten-year contract, for those of you at home, following this contract, basically oversees anything that we do, that the municipal corporation does between the town of Tingsborough and Comcast, so anything dealing with the right-of-way, true subscriber homes. So I want to give you guys a high level. Basic standard played for ten years, starting August first through twenty-twenty-four through twenty-thirty-four. Some of the, the things that are in this contract in relative to our franchise fees, which funds this department, will go from three percent to five, which will enhance the revenue which we receive from the Comcast, providing more funds for local initiative improvements. We've negotiated a high-definition, one high-definition channel for the PEG access channel. We are currently on standard-def baseband, low, very low quality. And again, the agreement spans about ten years, which is really stable for Tingsborough. Some of our communities and across Commonwealth are not so lucky, some are getting three or five from the local cable provider and capital, and capital contributions. So my recommendation that the board approves this contract for the next ten years for Comcast. And I yield my time and open up for any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may add one thing that Rony brought to my attention today is that our agreement with Verizon includes a provision that they will match the
Yes, correct.
Comcast pays. So our agreement with Verizon is three percent, so we'll be able to leverage this to get Verizon to match the
Correct.
Five percent as well. And then finally, this has obviously been reviewed and touched many times by Town Council, and so it is legally acceptable.
Cable Council.
From Town Council's office, yes.
Yes.
Relative to the Verizon matching, is that, that happened on an anniversary date? Is that on a new contract? Does that just happen automatically when we sign this? How does that get triggered with Verizon?
We will need, Cable Council will need to reach out to Verizon, and we will start that process.
Okay, so we just have to renegotiate that?
Correct. Once that, I believe, I believe the quote may on this, I believe we have a clause within our agreement with Verizon that outlines that once Comcast approves the percentage we, they would honor
Okay.
The match. And just so, Mr. Chair, also to point out, this does not include broadband service, just only cable television. So this agreement falls under the Federal Act of nineteen eighty-four, the Cable Act of nineteen eighty-four, as well as Mass General Law one sixty-six A.
Questions, comments from the board? We'll start with you, Mr. Schneider.
Rony, thank you for all the hard work I'm sure that went into this, so it's great. It looks very comprehensive. I got to say, the only disappointment I have in the whole thing is, is the senior discount being only two dollars. I would have loved to have seen a larger discount for our senior
So that actually, so I'm, Board Member Schneider, that's a standard bullet point. I, I wish we had Cable Council with us this evening. Those sort of agreements for the scene, for senior residents, that's usually pretty standard across, you know?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I understand it. I just, like I say, if we could have gotten a bigger discount, I would have been not much happier, but, but otherwise, I think this is fine. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
I've got no questions. Thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, no, I'm, I'm good. I'm good that it's a ten-year agreement. Let's get it locked in, and hopefully you don't have to deal with it for another nine and a half years.
And one last thing, if I may, Mr. Chair, to the people at home, you know, community media is here in Tingsborough. It is not just the small staff of this department. We are, our doors are always open if you want to learn about community access, the community media, you know, the doors are open if you want to learn how to, you know, learn video production and how to get a programming on air. We would love to get that going here in town, even though we do not have a facility. There are ways around that, and we obviously have a, you know, tight-knit network of neighbors that we could collaborate with, so feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And having been on some of those and done those video recordings, it's fun to work with Rony and the group, so I encourage folks to reach out if they are looking for those types of things. Okay, so with that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the renewal cable television license for the town of Tingsborough, term August first, twenty-twenty-four to July thirty, thirty-first, twenty-thirty-four, ten years, as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries three zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, people of Tingsborough.
Thank you, Rony.
Appreciate your help.
Okay. Select board reports. Mr. Schneider, why don't you start us off?
All right, thank you. Only comment I have today, tonight, is, you know, Colin has sent out a message to staff and members earlier this week, or, or last week, I guess, asking for more volunteers for the block party, and as many people have signed up, we could use that many more. So I would encourage anyone who has a free, you know, a couple of hours during the block party, please volunteer. It's going to be a great time for everybody in the community, but it only, it's only a great time if we get an adequate number of volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, please volunteer and please show up at the block party. It's going to be a
It's going to be fun.
Event. You know, I just want to reiterate, you know, the DPW's been having issues with people dumping at the recycling center again. Some people even took plastic garbage pails and threw them in the scrap metal, and you just can't do that, everybody. You know, this is for everybody. It's always just a very few people ruining it for everybody else. Please, follow the rules. They're very clear. Scrap metal is scrap metal. It's not plastic garbage pails. Please, everybody, follow the rules, you know? And as Colin said, we're going to have, you know, another video camera up there pretty soon, so, you know, you could be charged for illegal dumping also. Thank you.
Yes, thank you on both of those. This is our last meeting before the block party, so
Sure is.
Get volunteers out there. I know I'm, I'm doing my time. My wife saw that they still needed some folks, so she volunteered as well. I encourage everybody, it will be a good time for all the folks that will be attending, and respect your neighbors. There'll be a lot of folks in confined areas. We want to keep the town center clean, so, you know, this is our town, let's respect it, but also respect the neighbors in the neighborhoods. It's going to be a great time. I am looking forward to it, and I know that it has been a success in the past, and I expect it will be again. With that, our next meeting is August twenty-sixth, and we will have that agenda posted week after next. Before, I have a feeling that National Grid is, we still have that on the agenda, so we may have some folks that want to come in and listen to what the folks from National Grid are going to say about what we're, what they're doing about addressing some of the challenges we've had relative to power outages in certain areas and, and how, how we collectively, between National Grid and the town, can help mitigate some of those things. Some of it's mother nature, some of it is bad driving, and some of it is things that we can proactively help address, so we'll try to go through those. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, move that we go into exec, executive session under exemption three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. NEPA Local eight B, Mass COP Local five-one-seven.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor. That carries three zero zero. Everybody have a great evening. Thank you. See you on the twenty-sixth.